Mr. Salvo couldn't make it tonight, and I believe Mrs. Steele is on her way. And along with Town Manager Michael Unitz, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, in which we are a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, on the licenses and permits, we have corrections to the following applications to extend their one day to nine four seventeen instead of nine three seventeen. The applications are for Second Harvest Food Bank of Metrolina Incorporated, 2614 Highway, five sixteen, second floor, Old Bridge, New Jersey, for a one-day all-alcohol license from seven AM to eight PM, to be utilized at the TPC of Boston Golf Course, 400 Honor Palmer Boulevard, Norton, Mass., zero two seven six six for a private potty as falls. CDW at Fifteenth Green Sky Chalet from eight thirty-one to nine four seventeen. Cornell Limited Partnership at the Fifteen Green Chalet from eight thirty-one to nine four seventeen. And the Multibank Partners at the Sixteenth Green Sky Chalet from eight thirty-one to nine four fourteen seventeen. Stipulations, the details are required by the Chief of Police and appropriate visible signage, but two drink limit per person per service. Any questions?
No.
Does the Chair intend a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this correction? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
Aye, two of oh, yes. Thank you. Okay, we have an application of Barbara Ivory for one-day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everlanded Park on Saturday, August twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, from twelve noon to six PM for a private potty. I believe you all have a copy of that in your file. It has been signed off by the Fire Chief and the Police Chief and the Building Inspector. It's for a private potty of eighty from twelve to six. Have any questions? Seeing none, the Chair intends a motion to approve the application of Barbara Ivory, one fifty-four Resavelt Avenue, North Attleboro, Mass., for a one-day beer and wine to be utilized at the Everlanded Park.
So...
August twenty-six, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
Aye, two of oh, yes. Next, we have an application for Cassandra Care for a one-day beer and wine license to be utilized at the Everlanded Park on Friday, April eighteen, two thousand seventeen, from five to eight thirty PM for a private potty. It has been signed off by the Fire and Police Chief. And it looks like thirty people. And for personal use, per adult discretion, what that means. For beer and wine. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Comments? Seeing none, the Chair intends a motion to approve the application for a one-day beer and wine for Cassandra Care to be utilized at the Everlanded Field on eight eighteen seventeen from five to eight thirty PM.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
Aye, two of oh, yes. We have an application for Patima Watt for a one-day all-alcohol license to be utilized at the Everlanded Park on Saturday, August nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, from two to seven PM for a private potty. Potties from forty to fifty people. It has been signed off by the Police Chief. And it isn't all alcohol. And let's see. Products will be dispensed. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, the Chair intends a motion to approve the application of Patima Watt for a one-day all-alcohol license to be utilized at the Everlanded Park on Saturday, August nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, from two to seven PM for a private potty.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's say that again. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Bramwell?
Yes.
Aye, two of oh, yes. You're supposed to watch me.
I did watch you.
Okay. You gave me the eye. That was good. Okay. Okay. I want to skip over there for a couple of minutes and see if we can do it. While we have a moment, just prior to the meeting, we just found out that long-term selectmen George Santino from Mansfield passed away sometime early this morning. We obviously want to send our condolences to a counterpart over in Mansfield, along with George's family. Served with George for a number of years and saddened to hear that the town of Mansfield has lost such a dedicated servant. He's done a lot for the community over there. He's been involved for many, many years, not just in the selectmen, he's done other facilities and all that stuff too, so. But he's been very, very involved in the community, so we'd like to extend our condolences to his family and obviously to the residents of Mansfield. Okay. I don't think I saw anything.
Yeah, this is...
Number...
GATRA.
Okay.
GATRA, Dialyride, they're doing a trial on new services from Norton, Massachusetts. They have, they're adding Saturday service from Norton beginning on August fourth. They have the GATRA Dialyride service to the Patriot Place from Norton on Thursdays beginning August tenth. And they indicate to be sure to take advantage of these services now because if they don't get the ridership, it is just a trial period. And if they don't have people using the service, they'll discontinue it. Also a notification from NOAA about the normal, the new normal stormwater planning for record-setting rain events. And please come and join us to welcome technical specialists from National Oceanographic, Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Weather Service who are coming in to discuss the latest information on our changing New England weather patterns and why planning for stormwater rain-off is changing. It's at the Town Hall, second-floor conference area, Tuesday, August fifteenth, from nine eight AM to ten thirty AM. And that's all I saw.
Mr. Flaherty?
I have nothing.
I'm going to skip over a couple of things and see if we can get that projector working. We have requested Town Clerk Lucia Longhurst for permission to allow her to decrease the amount of wardens from five to one and the amount of poll workers from twenty to ten for the September twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen state primary and October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen state election. You all have a letter in your file, her request. Unitz, you want anything to it?
Yeah, Lucia believes that there's going to be a very small turnout for these elections. And this, by doing this, it'd be a savings of approximately $6,000 and save having a lot of people standing around, being bored, doing nothing.
We did this at the last election, that's correct.
Is this the nineteenth of September? Or the twenty-ninth?
Okay.
September nineteenth is a Friday.
Yep. At the nineteenth? So, the letter states that she now to cut down the cost for the state, special state primary on September nineteenth and the special state election on October seventeenth. She is requesting that we cut the wardens from five to one. Then she refers to Chapter Fifty-four, Section Twenty-four. We did this at the last election and it seemed to work just out fine. I don't think there was any major issues there, so. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No. My recollection is the last time she requested the same thing and there were no problems. Everything seemed to run smoothly.
And that was with a bigger than turnout, expected turnout, so.
So, seeing no further discussion, now, entertain a motion to request of Town Clerk Lucia Longhurst for permission to allow her to decrease the amount of wardens from five to one and the amount of poll workers from twenty to ten for the September twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen state primary and October seven, for the September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen state primary and October seventeen, two thousand seventeen state election.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The records show that Mrs. Steele is with us. Welcome. How are you?
Good. How are you?
We're on business number three, Mary.
Okay. Thanks.
So, under Section Three, it's a vote to sign the STG Consultant Services LLC Contract Amendment Number One to extend the period of performance ending date from June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, to coincide with a grant extension and increases fees by $1,000 per month during the six-month extension.
Yeah, this is the project that they're doing at the Housing Authority and the grant had to be applied throughout through the town. And they expect it to be done by June thirtieth, but it's going to be extended through December. And so, in the contract that you originally signed, it said if there was an extension, the company would continue to oversee the project at $1,000 a month. So this would be $6,000 more for the six-month period.
Okay.
And it's all comes out of the grant, grant funds.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, the Chair intends a motion to vote to sign the STG Consultant Services LLC Contract Amendment Number One to extend the period of performance ending date from June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, to coincide with a grant extension and increases the fee by $1,000 per month during the six-month extension.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that in the box?
Yes.
It was.
Okay. Okay, next we have discussion, home rule petition asking for state reimbursement of charter school expenses.
Yeah, this was sent to the town from the city of Lowell. And what they're asking is that they're filing a home rule petition with the state seeking full reimbursement for charter school tuitions. And as an example, the city of Lowell, the difference between assessments and reimbursements has totaled $126,748,762 over the past ten years. In FY eighteen, Lowell's charter school assessment was $22,336,638. And they are only being reimbursed by $2,990,185. And so, the combination of consistently growing charter school costs and rapidly shrinking reimbursement has resulted in considerable fiscal burdens upon communities throughout the Commonwealth. In FY seventeen, the charter school assessments for Norton were $1,616,977. And they've submitted their home rule petition. And if, they want to know if you're interested in joining the city of Lowell in pursuing a home rule petition, asking for full state reimbursement of charter school expenses, please feel free to contact the Lowell Mayor's Office. And they look forward to working with you on this matter.
Anybody? Questions? Personally, I don't have an issue with the charter schools. I think for certain, to a certain extent, they serve a purpose. The one part I don't appreciate is the fact that we have no, we have no ability to recommend or have any conversation about the amount of fees that we pay to that charter school. And I've always had an issue with that. It comes right off the top of the sheet, the cherry sheets, and we're not able to have a discussion. We're affected by law to control what we spend on the municipal and the school side of our budgets. We have to take that to town meeting, we have to get it approved, we have to live within our budgets. In this case, we even do that with our regional schools, the same thing. You know, we have the ability to have some control over it. My reason for supporting a order such as this, as a file, a home rule petition, would be the fact that I feel we should, if nothing else, we should have something to say in how much is being spent. And I don't know if that's going to happen with this home rule petition or not, but at some point, if the state wants to continue to push, and I know they're pushing for additional charter schools, and again, I'm not going to get into a discussion about the need because I'm not that familiar with it, other than I know that our school enrollments continue to drop and our costs seem to continue to rise for whatever reason. But I think it's important that we take a stand, and I think Lowell probably has the right idea. I wish them well on this. I guess we could join them on this. I'm not optimistic it's going to go anywhere, but I think it's worth sending a lot of support, nothing else. Anyone agree with that? Mr. Bramwell?
Yeah, I agree that I'd like to support it. I think just like many things that the state, good ideas the state comes up with, they kind of go overboard. And it was my feeling when they first started charter schools that it was meant as an alternative to underperforming public schools. And they've, and, which is more in urban areas. In this particular area where we have a charter school, the school districts perform at the same levels as the charter school. So they're taking away from one to give to another, and we don't have any local control over the management of that facility. So it's, it's, it may have had a good intention of giving an alternative for poorly performing public schools, but instead of, I think, most of the charter schools are taking students from well-performing public schools and not the target they were intended to, to improve upon. So it's gone, it's not hitting the target. It's a problem the state created, and the state should be paying for it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to be interested to see what the impact of Full Day K this fall is going to have on the enrollment at the school, but also at the charter school. Because I think we do lose a good number of our kids as a result of that. And then once you're in the system, you're in the system. So yeah, I agree. I think that, that supporting this, or at least with the letter, is worthwhile.
Okay. I think, and another part of this whole process too is the fact that we don't have the ability to control what we pay for special education costs, too. And, you know, one of the unfair avenues that we have with the charter schools is the fact that they don't necessarily have to take students that have those special needs like we are mandated to do so. So, you know, in all fairness, and I get, I understand why they want to try to select certain individuals to be educated in the charter schools, but at the same time, you know, the burden continues to be borne on towns like Norton, which I believe the last time was, our school budget is like thirty-one percent of our budget is for special education. And I think that's having a major impact on our services on our side. I saw the name Edward J. Kennedy on here, I'm thinking, I had to look twice, he's the mayor of Lowell, so must be a different Edward, I would assume. Anyway, Chair intends a motion to...
Hope so.
Do you want us to, should we file our own home rule or just...
I would just send the letter of support to them and see how theirs does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair enough. So, Chair intends a motion to send a letter of support to the city of Lowell on their efforts to file a motion for a home rule petition asking for full state reimbursement for charter school expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Are you ready? Want to give it a try?
Where?
We're having some technical difficulties. We've been trying to get some stuff up here and running, so we'll do it the old-fashioned way. So, this evening, we have, Mr. Unitz, why don't you bring us up to speed on this?
We met this week with representatives from Whole Market Foods, and they are looking at a possible purchase of the Cisco building, and they're here tonight to talk to you about what they're thinking about.
Okay. We have a familiar face from the Cossacks that is tonight. And I'm going to assume you're going to go over your presentation.
I think, do you all have copies?
Actually, we do have copies.
Oh, did you have copies?
This chief skate didn't give us too many color, though. I mean, those are at least in color.
Here, you can have a color one.
Thank you.
Another one, too. Lynn, can I have one, please? I don't have one. Other come round. Okay, so, good evening. Yes, again, my name is Lynn Chokarzik, Government Incentives Consulting, representing Whole Market Foods. And it's so nice to be back here again. Just a couple of years ago, working with New England Ice Cream, and it's great to see what a success that's been, as well as so many other projects. Tonight, I'm here with Troy Totten, who's the Vice President of Operations for Whole Market Foods. So Troy is going to walk through basically what the proposed expansion plans are, the background and history of the company, and the company's intent to apply for incentives. And so, this evening, first of all, I'd really like to thank Michael Unitz for his interest in attracting Whole Market Foods. You'll, hopefully, once you see it's actually on camera, it will be shown tonight, and you'll get to see, hopefully, these familiar products that are hopefully in your freezer at home. So, thanks, Michael, for all your support. And for the Board of Selectmen, thank you for inviting us here tonight. And we do have some guests here in the audience that I'd like to just recognize. State Representative Jay Barrows, thank you so much, Jay, for coming tonight. You've always been so instrumental with retaining businesses and attracting businesses in this area, the whole economic development scope, so thank you. We have Kara Griffin, who's the Executive Director of the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Kara. Great to see all the publicity the chamber's getting to in the region. Congratulations. And Ed Tartuffo, who's on the Board of Directors for the Chamber. Thank you, Ed, for all your support over the many, many years working in this region. And we also have Steve Beck, the President of New England Ice Cream. Thank you, Steve, for being here. I know you're also on the Board of Directors, and so glad to see you again. So, what we'll do right now is turn, go right into the slide presentation, okay? And then I'll be back. Thank you.
Sounds great. Good evening. Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Thank you. As Lynn said, my name is Troy Totten, and I am the Vice President of Operations for Whole Market Foods. And what I thought I would do is start out by just introducing our company to you. We're actually one of those companies that is quite a bit bigger than a lot of people realize. The company has been in business for over sixty years, and we have a slide presentation. We've had a few technical difficulties, but we're going to have it up on the screen, so you'll be able to see it. But Whole Market Foods has been in business for over sixty years. It was founded in Boston. Actually, it started out as a Waltham Beef Company, and for a long time was a supplier of ground beef and beef products to the delis and restaurants and stores within the greater Boston area. And about twenty years ago, and over the course of the years, the companies continue to change and evolve and expand. But about twenty years ago, we left our operation in Boston and moved out to Norwood, where we now have a hundred and eighty thousand square foot manufacturing facility, as well as our headquarters and R and D center. So it's a large facility. Whole Market Foods is a privately-held, family-owned company, but we distribute not only within the U.S., but across North America, as well as internationally. We ship overseas as well. So our facility's really transformed from a, just a beef company that's supplying, you know, kind of semi-processed foods to fully-cooked, value-added meals. And it's really been a big trend in the market. And you can see on this picture a few of the products. Hopefully, as Lynn said, some of those are in your freezer at home. We have a wide variety of products. We sell to a wide variety of customers. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that, but we sell to retailers, mass merchandise, as what, mass merchants, as well as convenience stores. So, we sell to stores that you know of. Companies like Roach Brothers and Wegmans, Stop &amp; Shop. BJ's is a big customer of ours, as well as some international and national chains like Walmart and Kroger and things of that nature. All of our products are protein-based, so we're a food company that's feeding America. And you'll see later that, you know, we really take that seriously in terms of the partnerships and the things that we do within the community, and I'll talk about that later. We, as I said, we manufacture products for retail as well as for convenience stores. So you'll see that we do some what we call grab-and-go products. So, you know, it's a hot dog or a product that you go into a convenience store and you're just kind of on the run and you get our products. And we also have the number-one branded meatball in the country. So of all of the brands that are out there in fully-cooked frozen meatballs, ours is the number one. And one of our best-selling techniques is we'll go into a potential customer and we'll take our products and all of our competition, and side by side, and say, "You choose." And consistently, time in and time out, quality wins. And that's one of the things that we really stand for, is our, the quality behind our products. As you go through the deck, you can see some of the products we sell in the refrigerated section and the frozen section. We have chicken, we have meatball products. We also, I think I mentioned in the convenience store, if you go to the next slide, we have a whole line of hot dogs and German sausages, as well as some sort of hot dog alternatives, which is a fully-cooked breaded chicken log, right? So it's like a hot dog, but it's all white meat chicken. And they're fantastic. I mean, it's a really great product. And then, you know, if you go to the next slide, you can see that, you know, we're really about making products that people can feed their family in a wholesome way at a very affordable price. So really high-quality products, you know, and a person that might be working can, you know, get a jar of pasta sauce, they can buy a box of pasta, and they can get a bag of fully-cooked, cooked-perfect meatballs, and they can feed their family for a very affordable price, a very wholesome meal, and really tastes great. And that's one of the things that we're, you know, we're so proud of. So I just want to now talk a little bit about our expansion plans. So, as I said, our facility in Norwood, that's our headquarters, that's our primary manufacturing site. We've got four hundred full-time employees that are there, and we are a Massachusetts manufacturer. And as I said, we've been there for twenty years, and over the years, we've expanded and continued to grow. And frankly, we're at the point now where we need to grow beyond the capacity of that facility. And so, we started more than a year ago looking at how we might expand outside of Norwood. And so, as we've looked, we've looked both within Massachusetts as well as outside of Massachusetts. But, you know, we, our roots run deep here in Massachusetts, and so we identified, as Lynn said, the Cisco Building, which is here in Norton, as a facility that could fit our needs quite nicely. However, it's frankly a little bit bigger than what we really need for our operations. We're interested in that facility for the freezer that's there, and that's about twenty-five percent of the building. And so, as we started looking at that, that freezer would frankly require quite a bit of renovation before it could be operational again. And so, when we started talking to the current owners, it frankly didn't make a lot of sense for us to go in there as a tenant, because the amount of renovations that would be required that they were looking for us to fund in somebody else's building, where we're like spending money on somebody else's building so we could go in there and operate, just didn't make sense for us. And so, we changed the conversation from being a tenant to purchasing the building. And so, that's really, you know, the crux of why I'm here today is to, is to really explain to you what we're, what we're trying to do. So, the idea would be that we would go in there and purchase this building. It'd be a very expensive purchase for us. We would occupy roughly a hundred and fifty... be a very expensive purchase for us. We would occupy roughly 115,000 of the 400-plus-thousand square feet of that building, and spend quite a bit of money renovating and standing up the freezer that's there. So, there's walls that need to be reinstalled, there's quite a bit of equipment that needs to be installed, and obviously, that's going to require quite a bit of time and money. So, we've been spending quite a bit of energy and money really focusing on, well, what would it take for us to stand that building back up? And then, once we do, what would that do in terms of setting us up for the future? So, what would we need in terms of staffing? And so, we've really kind of laid out the plan for the cost to get the capital correct, as well as identified operationally what it would look like if we got it running. So, we proposed, at least initially, that we would have 20 of our full-time people working there, a combination of material handling, shipping. Would really, this would be a distribution center for us, that would support our continued growth in the industry, and really give us a great location here in Norton. And so, the other parts of the facility, we would continue to lease out to other clients, right? Our goal would be to fully occupy the building with other folks that need that, you know, that need that space. So, that's really our goal. And just to talk a little bit more about, you know, about what we envision, I mentioned that the facility needs quite a bit of work. I mean, there'd be, there'd be quite a bit of money that would be spent in contractors to get that building back up. And then, the ongoing costs associated, or the ongoing operating costs, whether that's landscaping, or snow removal, or any of those things, plus the facilities to support the people that are there. So, we envision that, you know, we've become a partner in the town of Norton, operating that facility in both support of our business, as well as those other clients that are there. And then, just to give you a little more context about who Home Market Foods is, I mentioned that, you know, we're a food company, and our owners, being privately-held, are really passionate about our, about the role that we play. And so, our charity of choice is the Greater Boston Food Bank. I am actually a, on the Board of Directors for the Greater Boston Food Bank, and Home Market Foods takes it very seriously. We, we're actually recognized as one of the, one of the companies that provides not only cash funding to the, to the Greater Boston Food Bank. We have automatic withdrawal from our paychecks, so individuals contribute, the company matches that, and that money goes to the Greater Boston Food Bank. We make, we make financial donations to them. We also donate food to them, so that that passes directly on to their, to the people that they support. And then, we also spend quite a bit of time going there and contributing time. So, we'll take, we have, this year, we have 20 interns working at Home Market Foods, and we took all of the 20 interns down there to sort food and doing things like that. And that cascades throughout the, you know, throughout the greater Boston area, including Norton. So, two of, two of the facilities here in Norton benefit from that. And that really was interesting to make that connection, and frankly, didn't know that until, you know, we started talking with Mike and learned that. So, just gives you a sense for kind of who we are and what we stand for as a company. And being privately-held, that's one of the things that, you know, our ownership really, really stands for. So, you know, that's a bit about who Home Market Foods is, and frankly, a little bit about why we're interested in this facility in Norton.
Okay. And just to more or less follow up with that, the last slide, I hope you've enjoyed some of the slides, and the product looks more familiar once you see it in color. But this, having Home Market Foods, you know, they're trying to make some corporate real estate decisions, but if they ended up locating here, it would, Norton would be in the position to attract a longstanding, family-owned business that has very deep roots in Massachusetts, and, as well as revitalizing an underutilized building. Over 40% of the building is vacant. And we, when we met with Mike Unitz last week, and the deputy fire chief, he was explaining that there are all types of items that would need to be improved in that building, as you can imagine. So, with the company having proposed plans to purchase this and make that type of investment, that could really redevelop that building quite nicely, as well as increasing real estate taxes. You know, again, because if the building is, you know, approximately 40% vacant, that will, you know, increase the assessed value, once it gets more or less to full capacity, and again, bring new tax revenue with the renovation spend that the company is, would need to do to meet their real estate requirements. And then, again, just summarizing, having such a positive impact on local businesses, as you can see from the other businesses that have located here, how generous they've been to support the community, and then with other businesses. So, that's it as far as the slide presentation, and I wanted to talk about the, you know, a proposed tax incentive. And so, the company has an interest in applying for a TIF, and they know that there's a process. They are hoping to move forward with submitting a TIF proposal next week, and then having discussions with the town manager and some of his team to hopefully work out a mutual arrangement. And then, as you all know, then once there's a mutual arrangement, it needs to go back to the Board of Selectmen for a recommendation to town meeting, and town meeting has the final approval for all TIFs in Massachusetts, and then having the state, having the final, the end approval. Because, as you know, this is a state program known as the Economic Development Center Program, and they monitor and oversee this program. So, they allow the municipalities to participate. And it's been great that Norton has been very active with this program, with New England Ice Cream, El Nilo, Horizon Beverage, Autopart International. It was actually great to see that they're actually on the agenda tonight, some discussion about them as well. So, you can see if it's the right type of company, it really brings in a lot of great benefits to the community. So, we look forward to answering any questions. So, thank you.
First of all, I think it's obvious that you folks are great neighbors in your community now and always. So, and it's funny, I'm looking at the list of investing in communities with the Greater Boston Food Bank. A couple of kindnesses is right underneath us.
We know.
And the North Cottages is right across the street from us.
Yeah.
You're in the neighborhood.
Very good.
So, which is, which is very good. You know, some might say, "Why would we even consider thinking about, you know, some kind of a TIF program on an existing building?" Well, that existing building started off as Fernandez's.
Yep, it started as Fernandez's and...
Supermarkets.
It became...
When it became, before it became Hossman Cisco, it became something else, too. But it's been there for quite a few years. We've had some issues in the past about, you know, the compresses and the, you know, the amount of noise that facility creates. What's interesting about this proposal is, you take in a very old building, and you're going to make renovations. So, obviously, it's our hope and desire, my hope and desire, that the new type of technology you're going to be using is going to make it a little bit quieter than it has been in the past. And making a large investment in a building like that costs a lot of money, especially in an old building like that.
Exactly.
It does take, take a lot of investing to get that thing up to speed. So, you know, on the surface, I think it's a great idea. You know, we'll have other conversations about, you know, traffic and trucks, and we could do all that stuff. The building is pre-existing. We're not building anything new here. We're just taking a, an old building and making it new again, you know, and putting some life back into it. This board has been very supportive in the past about offering these TIFs for that one reason. It generates new jobs, it generates new income for the town, taxes that we can, we desperately need. You know, we're doing a number of things in town right now. We've got a building here that should have been knocked down 30 years ago, that we'd, you know, we'd like to start looking at, you know, making some improvements on. And with these new tax revenues coming in, we have a building right now that's empty, and I understand it's assessed differently because it is an empty building. So, we're not benefiting from the full tax benefit of the property as it stands today. So, you know, we have to come up with a way to make that all happen, where it would be nice to fill it up again, and make it, make it working and have it work for us at the same time. Anyone have any questions, comments?
And it appears to be a, I was looking at the slide presentation earlier. Mike had sent it to us on our computers, so I did see it in color.
I did.
And the packaging looked familiar. And then, when you said BJ's, I'm saying, "Those must be the meatballs my wife got for my granddaughter's birthday party this past year." And they were excellent.
Thank you for your business.
But it was just, you know, going through, looking at the pictures, but to find a family-run business that is, we've been very fortunate with all the businesses that we've been bringing in, that they're very community-oriented. And we've got businesses who are having employees come here before the business even gets here, and they're helping out in our community.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's things that you never expected, you know, you're, we're always talking about taxes and, and, you know, business and stuff, but just to get people volunteering to come and actually help cut trails in the woods, and it's, it's just refreshing, and it's a totally different side of attracting businesses that you don't really think about. But it makes the community so much better. And I look forward to pursuing this. It's a, it looks like a very nice, nice-run family business. And coming from a family business background, it's, that's a plus. So, I can't wait to have Mike report back to us on his conversations with you.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else? I think the proximity of the two locations, too, in Norwood and obviously Norton, you know, looking any direction, we're almost together anyway, when you look at the spelling of the two towns. But, you know, they're so close together in a lot of ways, and highway system between the two. I mean, I work in Norwood, and I work in the whole area, but Norwood mostly. And I know how easy it is to get to Norwood from here, and vice versa.
And maybe they can borrow Bob Kraft's new planes and New England Ice Cream. These guys can ship their stuff to China together.
There you go. We're always talking about food and ice cream. We're still waiting for samples on the ice cream. Talking about the best meatballs in the world. We haven't seen those yet, so. But I think it's, it's wonderful what you guys have done so far, and, you know, just take a small company and grow in Massachusetts, and make it all happen. You know, I personally would like to be a part of that next, next step, and I think this is a great opportunity for the town and for your company to work together and make this all happen. We have some specifics we have to iron out as far as town meetings and all that stuff, but, you know, we'll let Mike do that, do that part for us. But personally, I think it's a win-win for you, and it's a win-win for us. So, hopefully we can make this happen sooner than later, in the most part. Anyone else? Oh, here comes Jay. Come on, Jay. You know you want to say something. Come on up.
Thank you.
You bringing any meatballs, would you?
I didn't. But, no, thank you and the support the board has shown for this opportunity. I think there's been a goal to increase commercial development in Norton. Over the years, you've maintained that level of tax rate, you've maintained a very welcoming community, and it has paid off. I mean, when I think back of what we've accomplished over the years in terms of who's come, the diversity of which make up a great diverse community, I mean, I think it's awesome. And to turn that old building into a viable structure for years to come is really, really neat. And again, I think you'll attract other tenants that, you know, you'll kind of coexist together and do some similar things. And so, I will support whatever you folks come up with at the state level. And really, you know, Massachusetts is still working really, really hard to attract businesses, but also those that are here, to see them grow and make life a little easier, if we can, in spite of all the other issues that go on when you're running a business. But, so I welcome the opportunity to represent Norton and make sure that we can deliver whatever you folks come up with and the community supports as well. So, congratulations. I got another one, I think. Good luck.
Anyone else?
I got to get out of his way.
Come on up. Why is he running away from you, Ed? I don't...
Like I said last time, I almost ran me over. It's always a pleasure to come to Norton to talk about economic development. I think, you know, the town of Norton, where the policy got into the Board of Selectmen, has really been a force in town, where you've encouraged growth, you've created growth, you've created jobs. You earn the reputation for being business-friendly. You deserve that reputation. It always should be repeated that you've got that reputation, and you should brag about that reputation. I think it's evident with the companies that come here, through a lot of efforts of Lynn. And as I told you the first time she was here, once she knows where you live, she's coming back. And she's been faithful to that. She's brought some, several companies here that we're all proud of. And what many people don't realize is that when one community gets a company like this, we all benefit. Because it has a multiplier effect that people that work for that company don't just live in the town of Norton. They live in the towns surrounding us. And when you lose a good company, it has a negative impact, where now you start to lose those jobs, and you lose your residents, and you lose the economic benefits. But Norton has done well by this. You know, we all wish you luck and success to continue this. So, really proud to be here tonight, and hope you can work something out. If anybody can do it, I've always said, you find a way to make it happen in Norton. And I'm sure through Mike's guidance that that will happen for you. So, thank you very much.
Well, I think over the years, too, you've been very supportive of us also, and we appreciate that.
Likewise.
You've always been here to help us and give us...
It's always been a pleasure.
...on the way. So, we appreciate all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you need to get some more homework done, and we'll definitely looking forward to, you know, some additional information about the project. It would be a great, great opportunity for us to take that abandoned building and finally turn it back into something viable, and put some new breath into it, make it look, look and sound right, and make it work for us. So, look forward to further discussions. And anything else?
Thank you. Well, you've made me feel very welcome tonight, and Mike, thank you for the welcome earlier. You know, I feel really positive about the opportunity, and we're going to continue to work hard to show you that we can be a good part of the community.
And we'll keep things going on our end, too.
Right.
Make it happen for you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business. Good luck with your business. Lynn and Troy, good luck. Good luck.
Okay. So, next on the agenda, we have discussion of the potential town meeting articles.
Just wanted to go over a couple that I think I gave you copies of the planning boards working on. One, obviously, is the medical marijuana moratorium article. And the reason we need this again is because licenses can be issued starting April 1st, and we have to have, if we, if we wanted to ban marijuana sales in Norton, we have to have an election, that on the ballot in April, because the town of Norton voted in support of legalizing marijuana. 5,300-something people voted in support of legalizing marijuana. So, in order to ban the sale of marijuana, the voters have to agree to that. So, we have to have the moratorium in the meantime, because you can't be retroactive. So, our election isn't until after April 1st. So, if someone came forward April 1st and tried to pull a permit, and then we said, "No, we passed a moratorium," they'd say, "No, you passed that after I applied, so you can't ban me." So, that's why we'd need the moratorium. The planning board will be having hearings on that, coming back with the recommendation. The other one that I went to the planning board the other night to talk about, this is something that we've been working on for about a year now, actually, is to change some of the bylaw under non-conforming residential structures. And the example I always use on this is, if you have a lot that is in, is 40,000 square feet, and all of a sudden your area of town gets rezoned to 80,000 square feet, you now have a legal non-conforming lot. And I always use the example of, like, say, some kids tell their dad they want a built, they want an above-ground pool in the yard. Well, it goes to Namco in June, the beginning of June, buys a pool. They go to pull a permit, and the building inspector says, "Oh, you got a legal non-conforming lot. You got to go to the ZBA." So, they have to apply in June to be heard in July, and then there's a 21-day appeal period after that. So, the summer's over, so forget the pool, we don't need it anymore. So, the summer's over, so forget the pool, we don't need it anymore. So, what this would do, if you had a lot that had insufficient area, and you could put a pool in your yard that would meet all... Or put a deck on your house or something that would meet all the setback requirements, you could do it. The building inspector could allow it without making you go to the ZBA. The other one would be insufficient frontage. If you had insufficient frontage, it would make it a legal non-conforming lot. And same thing. If you could meet all the current setback requirements and put an addition on your house, you could do it without coming back to the ZBA. And the last one is if you had a house that was fifteen feet from the sideline, and the requirement now is twenty, and you wanted to put an addition on your house that wouldn't go any closer than the fifteen, you'd be able to do it without going back to the ZBA. So, the reason that you do this is ninety-nine percent of these things get granted at the ZBA anyway, so it just delays people for three months, and it just burdens the ZBA and everybody else. And then, obviously, after talking with them tonight, I would put... The recommendation would be to put a placeholder on for a TIF in case we can work something out. The reason being, your next meeting is the 24th. The warrant closes on the 23rd, so that's why I'm talking about that. And the other thing I'd like to put on, as you talked about, we were fortunate this year to have almost $1.5 million in a permit fee from Elm Island, which is a one-time thing. So, I would like to use that money this year to put it... Have an article to hire an architect to design and engineer a town hall that we could build behind here like Foxborough did. And also, we're still looking for the right lot, but to design a council on aging building. And if we put that $1.5 million in there, it would... I think it would be enough to go through that process. Usually, the architect's at 10% of the cost of buildings. And so, we could get moving on that, at least get something finally done on that.
I would agree with that. I think it's important that we start putting some seed money away to start looking at how to build and improve these buildings. Obviously, we have to wait for the certification on what the free cash is coming back, but if there's any kind of, like, a one-time, like, the 1.5 on the permitting stuff, that alone has got to be there somewhere. So, we need to utilize it, take advantage of it. I would like you to add one more placeholder. I'm not suggesting we're going to do it. Can you blow in on that fence post? I brought you a sample tonight of what we're dealing with here. That... Leave the dust alone, Peter.
You're fit to blow in on it. You told me to.
The town common, if you haven't been paying attention, we are in the process of revitalizing into town common. And one of the major obstacles we're running into is this 152-year-old fence we're dealing with around the corner. Now, you can see some of the detail from the picture, but when I tell you there's some wet paint on that, folks, I'm telling you there's some wet paint on it. We're in the process... We just took down fourteen sections. We took them down because they were falling down, and we were concerned about people maybe taking pieces of it and going somewhere else with it. We are in the process right now. We're going to kick off a fundraising campaign to replace it. The molds to restructure those pieces are going to cost anywhere from sixteen to $20,000 just to make up the molds that they use today. That post there is made of cast iron. It probably weighs about 100 pounds, and that's just one component of the project. There are a number of other pieces that go with it. I've got a couple here. And as you can see, 152 years has taken its toll on some of the knuckles and the components that we need to do, but everything can be replicated. What's interesting, we're working with a company down in Taunton. It's called Walliston Foundry, and these are some of the pieces that we're working with. These are the pieces we can't restore, but we've been told by the company that they have the ability to sandblast and powder coat and replicate all of these different pieces that we're working on. They're presently working on the Longfellow Bridge. That's one of their major projects right now in Boston, and they're doing a complete renovation of that. We are hopeful that we're going to be able to recycle at least 40 to 50% of the pieces to be utilized to rebuild the fence. And we're very fortunate in this town to have a highway department that is creative and can be relied on. These guys are tremendous, and they're the ones that are willing to take it down and put it back up again, so we don't have to pay the labor cost to make it all happen. It does mean, though, we're going to have to replicate some of it. We have no choice in the matter. But as you can see by the condition of them, Eliza Wheaton, who founded, who established Wheaton College, actually donated this fence to the town back in 1865. And we've been gluing it together for years, trying to do the best we can with it. I'm sure Brad knows more about it than I do, but the fact is that it's been welded and it's been reinforced and everything we possibly can to make it happen. So, part of the restoration project is to replace this and replicate this fence. So, again, I'm just asking for a placeholder. I'm not asking for any money, because we are going to actively start pursuing donations to try to see if we can get this fence put back together again sooner than later. Because it is a... We've had some... A number of discussions with the Historic District Commission about it. They want to leave the fence the way it is today. If you've gone through downtown, you've noticed that we have put in some new sidewalks, working on others. The well is now in there, the artesian well we had to install. The highway department also did a great job, again, of sinking that into the ground. You can't see it anymore. We poured a hole in there with a cover on it, and we now have it underground. So, you can't see the well. It doesn't stick up out of the ground like it used to. And all the technology that goes with it has been moved around to make it work, so... Very, very old historic fence. Obviously, we want to salvage everything we can. There are pieces like these that we can't possibly fix. You can't fix cast iron.
Right.
Once it has a hole in it, it's virtually impossible to fix it. The thing right there weighs about 20 pounds. And it's... The one thing that will last throughout the whole process, the one thing we probably will not have to replace is the top ball. It weighs about 12 pounds, and it screws the whole thing together. It kind of screws it all together. And that is solid cast iron, and those are in perfect shape. So, that's one piece we won't have to deal with, but the rest of it, we're going to have to do. Just want to let people know, I think, because we're not having another meeting, again, I know... Not suggesting we're going to ask for any money, but I want to put a placeholder in there, and we're going to continue to see how much this week can get done through the donation process. So, there will be a sign going up, one of those barometer signs showing people where to send donations. I'll work on that myself this week and try to get that out there on a temporary basis. But, one again, I wanted to show you some of the components of the old fence. Anyone have any questions? Do you want me to toss one over to you so you can look at it?
Put it down.
Okay. I think my hands are covered with wet, too, on top of it.
It looked pretty good in their presentation.
Yeah, and we were laughing, because in the presentation we just had, they showed the gazebo with the fence in front of it. That fence isn't there right now. We had to tear that down, because that much of looking at is what they took that picture of. So, that section of fence is now down and gone, so... Okay. Any other town meeting articles? Anything anybody want to put on for placement? Just let them know if there's something else you think we've missed or you want to talk about. Okay. Next, we have the proclamation of Autopark International Day. The units and I attended the 60th anniversary of their business. In fact, the owner, the original founder, was there today, which is very interesting. I remember him from when they first went in there, and he's doing very well. He sold the company along the way, but we did do a proclamation, and someone want to read it? I'll let somebody read it.
I'll read it. Thank you. Proclamation. Whereas Autoparks International Incorporated was founded by Steven Patkin in the summer of 1957 to meet the needs of his family's car dealership for aftermarket foreign car parts, and whereas the first store was opened in Massachusetts with only four team members, and whereas its aftermarket parts operation has endured tremendous growth since that time. Now, 3,100 team members strong and a leader in the automotive parts aftermarket with some 40,000 foreign, domestic, and late-model parts, and whereas, following an extensive search, the former Polaroid building in Norton, Massachusetts, was identified as a new home for its 360,000-square-foot distribution center and headquarters. An expansion project that would relocate and consolidate its Sharon and Foxborough operations, contribute to Norton's tax revenues, and create opportunities for the residents and businesses of Norton. And whereas, in the presence of gathered family, friends, business partners, and officials, it is most appropriate that we recognize, celebrate, and congratulate Autoparks International and its team members on the occasion of its 60th anniversary. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Norton Board of Selectmen that Thursday, August 10th, 2017, be recognized in our town as Autopark International Day and further extends its best wishes for its continued success in further endeavors in our community. Signed, the Norton Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Brad. Yeah, this is a real success story. I was surprised today to find out he has over 300 people working in that facility over there. And this was a TIF. This was one of our original TIFs way, way back. So, again, it shows the importance of working with businesses that want to come and relocate. In this case, they came from Sharon and Foxborough to relocate here in Norton, and has been very, very successful. One thing that I came away with today after the brief introductions and ceremony was the sense of family this organization has. I mean, these people have been there, some of these have been there a long time. And it was interesting to listen to some of the stories and camaraderie and some of the back-and-forth between the different offices of the company and the original owner, who was there also with his wife. They were both there. So, it was amazing to see it all come together and make it all happen. I did tell a story, and they did talk about it today, where Mr. Steele, you were just elected. We put a new roof on the senior building, the COA building.
Oh, yeah.
And I told them the story about Autoparks donated all the material to help us put a new roof on the COA building, which we volunteered. Much of us got together and volunteered and did it one day. But what was more important was they also sent people over to help us. And not only donated the product, but they also donated their time, and people came to assist. So, right away, you knew it was going to be a great family relationship between us and them. And just watching, again, the interaction today, it was fun to watch them, because they truly enjoy working together, and it's like one big happy family, and it was fun to watch, so... Want to add anything to it? Mike? No. I was the only one there with a tie and jacket on, so I had to dress down. He warned me. He really did, but I haven't paid attention to him, so... Okay. Tom, may I just report?
I just wanted to give you an update. We had a good meeting last Wednesday. Tabitha organized it, the Town Planner, and we had at least four officials from District Five here. The engineers for the Route 123 project, Condyne and their engineer... Engineers, two of them representatives from syrup ed, and the town department heads water, sewer, highway planning that will be dealing with the project. It was a great meeting to get everyone in the same room so that we could look at timelines and coordinate things, because Condyne is going to have to have all their sewer work done by 2000... In the spring of 2018, they'll be doing all their work, and then the state will be going out to bid at that time, and in 2019, the state will be starting their work. And the state said it will be two years before they complete all their work. We talked about the coordination of that, the sewer, and also the traffic signalization that Condyne will be putting at the intersection of Leonard Street and 123. All that will have to be coordinated with the lights at the highway, the traffic signalization at the highway. The state did say they will tell the company that's awarded the contract that they want them to do the traffic signalization first. We had the public meeting where that became very apparent, that that's what people wanted in town. They want as soon as possible those traffic signals to go in. And at that meeting, the state said, "Well, it would be up to the contractor to decide." And we sent them the letter saying, you know, that we really wanted to see that happen first, and they agreed that they will tell the contractor to do that portion of the project first. So, we're going to keep having these meetings. The state expects to have their 75% plans done within a month. And in May, we'll have to do all the... We'll have to be working. We're going to have a lot, it's like 63 easements between temporary and permanent easements that we're going to have to take, and that'll all be at the May town meeting. So, we'll be doing a lot of work this winter, getting all the sign-offs and appraisals and everything else on that. That'll be our job. And Tabitha also arranged to have the owners of the plaza where the Dunkin' Donuts is to come in the next day, and we sat down and talked with them, and they agreed. What we'd like to do is the land that we own directly across the street from Leonard Street would be to create an entranceway in there, close off that exit that comes out of Dunkin' Donuts right now, so that everyone would have to exit at the traffic signal. It'd be a lot safer. They agreed with that. You know, they were very happy with that.
It also allows us access to land behind that. We own the land out front. We have some land behind that that we could potentially use in the future. You know, it'd be a straight shot from that same traffic light. And so, you know, when we... Hopefully, when we design that, we'll have a kind of a leg popping in there to a certain extent that we can utilize for... We decide to do something in the future, we'll have that there already for us.
And we also met last week out in the field, Keith Silver and myself, with National Grid, who now is setting the poles instead of Verizon, which Verizon never did anything moving those two poles right there at Crickets Corner. Those two poles are going across the street, and Verizon is going to take care of that.
That's a very dangerous thing.
So, that's moving forward.
A dangerous spot.
And just one other thing, we did receive a letter from the state, which I've sent to Condyne. And anyone else that's interested, hopefully, will take advantage of it. The state's looking for 2,000 square feet of usable space in Bridgewater, Lakeville, Mansfield, Middleborough, Norton, Rainham, or Taunton. Hopefully, it doesn't give a stipulation. It has to be a gateway city again, but... So, anyone out there that knows anyone that has 2,000 square feet of space, they can go online to COMBIES, and there's instructions there on how to bid. So, if they go to www.combys.com, and they can check for this RFP and bid on that space.
Appointments and regulations, retirements. We have an appointment to the member of the Board of Selectmen to the Bristol County Advisory Board. Find out what that is?
They... Every town gets a representative from their Board of Selectmen on the advisory board, and...
To what?
To...
Is this Bristol County?
The Bristol County budget.
Oh.
Not retirement. It'd be the Bristol County budget that the board would be in charge of approving the budget for the year.
So, once a year they meet or there's a process?
Probably a few times a year.
I think Tim Giblin did that. I think Tim was represented for years.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be the chairperson.
It changes every, every, every year.
I think I remembered that way, too.
I, I thought it was supposed to be the new person.
That would work.
And that's another good point. Cause we, we could designate the town manager also.
Nope. Can't be. It's gotta be elected official.
So anyway, think about it, if anyone wants to volunteer, I, I guess we have to get online and find out more about what this is all about. But it's the Bristol County...
Advisory Board.
Advisory Board. I guess we'll have to look it up and see what that's all about. Anyone wants to volunteer, feel free to do so. But meantime, we'll have to find out what it is. We have the appointment of Regan Mulaney, Part-Time Conservation Commission Secretary, effective August 16, 2017. Uh, I think you have a copy of that in your file, somewhere. I got it here somewhere.
While you're looking, um, I can just talk a little bit. Uh, Regan, um, seems like she'll be great in the position of Conservation Secretary. Um, Regan's had a lot of experience and, um, is now looking to be, just work part-time. She worked at the aquarium in Boston and some other, um, areas similar to that in the, working in the environmental fields, and, um, has a knowledge of the environmental field, so she'd be good right in this position, and, uh, has worked as a secretary, taking minutes at some of the meetings on the boards that she was on, so.
Michael D. Unis, Town Manager, Notice of Appointment of Part-Time Conservation Commission Secretary. I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter that acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I've appointed the following individual as Part-Time Conservation Commission Secretary, Regan Mulaney, Mulaney. The appointment was made August 3rd, 2017, in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter. It will be effective August 18, 2017, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to said date. I specifically request the Board's acceptance of this appointment with effective date of August 16th, 2017. Anyone have any questions? CNN, Chair Intend, motion to support the appointment of Regan Mulaney to the Part-Time Conservation Commission Secretary position, effective August 16, 2017.
So moved. Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? CNN, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And no one better leave in the short term. I'm sick of doing interviews all summer long. Payroll position, Assistant Town Clerk, this position, Rector Acta, Fire Chief's Administrative Assistant.
Okay, next we have a letter from Susan Boylan for the appointment to the Norton Cultural Council. This is one of those, uh, strange councils where they can always serve two terms, and then they can't serve again after. And from what I know, the, uh, it's always openings.
Yeah, I think they can serve again, but it can't be consecutive, so they have to do two, three-year terms, and then they have to step off. And there's, they can be up to 22 people on the committee.
I have no idea how many are on there, but it's not 22, I can show you that. Anyway, we have our letter, the letter from Susan. Uh, this letter is a service and introduction pertaining to my interest in becoming a member of the Norton Cultural Council. Participation to council would enable me to work with other community members in best utilizing grant funds provided by the state for cultural activities to benefit the greatest number of people in Norton. My career as a clinical social worker in New York City for 32 years has provided me with considerable experience in working with groups and individuals in many different settings. Since retirement, my volunteer activities, including serving as a member of the Board of, Board for the Blue Ridge Women in Agriculture, a nonprofit whose mission is to support women farmers in western North Carolina, completing that state's Master Gardening Certification, Certification Program, in helping to maintain public gardens, counseling victims of Hurricane Katrina in Mississippi, teaching creative writing in the county jail, and volunteering as a guide at the Ames Mansion in the Borderlands State Park. As a citizen committed to community, to community involvement, I believe I can contribute to Norton's community and as well will personally benefit in learning more about the people in the town in which I am a fairly new resident. Signed by Susan Boylan. Anyone have any questions? Then Chair Intend, a motion to, uh, appoint Susan Boylan to the Norton Cultural Council.
So moved. Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? CNN, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, selection report mail. Grandma, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Flaherty?
I am all set.
Mr. Steele? We do have one letter from, regarding Feeny Island from Corporal Man Page. Is, uh, Mr. Unis, it's the filing in the town's permanent files, please find the original documents, will, which were recorded on June 23rd, 2017, in book number 23825, page 112, the Bristol County North District Registry of Deeds in the above referenced matter. It now means that Feeny Islands is now owned by the town of Norton. Right?
Correct.
Did you ever check on the signers for boats and stuff? Have we looked into that yet? Yeah, we're gonna find out. We passed some bylaws restricting certain, certain stuff, certain types of, uh, activities on the water. I think we need to get those things posted. You wanna talk about the, uh, Solitude? Mike?
Sure. We got a report from Solitude, and, uh, there's, seem to think their treatments have gone well, and, um, there's still ongoing inspections. Um, I had it. So they were saying that, um, on the Lake Winnicott, the treatment went well, and there's a large amount of water mail, which I don't know what water mail is, near the shoreline. You can see it, I think, we were out there today.
Yeah.
You can see it. But there's no, there was no fan watt observed, so they were successful of that, and the mill foil appears to be dead. So, um, and on the reservoir, um, treatment went well there also. They focused on the area near the inlet, and they're going back again, uh, in a week to observe and take water samples and see how things are working there. Um, Chartley Pond has been treated, uh, areas for water chestnut, and also Barrowsville Pond, they treated three acres of the water chestnut, um, growth area, and, um, they did see denser merge growth of fan watt, mill foil, and bladen watt were observed, so. They are ongoing, and, uh, it will be an ongoing program for a few years, and hopefully, uh, it is successful. I know the reservoir looks good, and on Winnicott, it does seem like there's a lot more open area this year than last year. Last year, it seemed like it was just a small area in the dead center that...
Yeah, like, like the top of my head.
But you can, as they said, you can see around the shore, there's something floating around the shore.
What is that stuff? Can you find out what the, and we went by today...
I imagine it's what, it's gotta be...
It, it was, it was like floating islands, and I guess that's the best way to talk, refer to them. Just big massive areas of green on the, on top, sitting on top of the water. And I'm hoping that's being killed off somehow, because, uh, Winnicott, to me, looked like the worst, worst body we had, today, as of today. I think, as, as Mike indicated, the reservoir looks pretty good, and you can actually see around the edges where you, you can tell that something's happening there. But I am kinda concerned about what's of these green, if you have a chance to go down Bay Road, look at it. It's like the whole shoreline, what, 50 feet out or more, is just a mass of green.
Hmm.
Floating. It looks like it's floating.
Yeah, I walked there a couple times, and even just some photos of it.
I almost wish, I almost wish you, like, I could take a big vacuum and just suck it all off, you know, but I don't know what it is. Could you find out what that...
Yeah, where is the thing I read, just a second. It's more than likely it's the water mail, cause they said large amount of water mail observed near the shoreline.
And that's being treated?
I don't know if that's something that's being treated, or if that's coming because of what they're killing off, so I will ask them about it.
It's being observed.
Yeah, we have to find out. I mean, it is, it is quite a bit. But the, the center of the lake in Winnicott is, is nice and clear. You can see a nice big area in the middle now, but there's a lot of stuff around the edge. We had, there was a swan sitting in the water, it was all green, and it was like, yuck. You know, you have to wonder what it is they're sitting in, so. If we can get some information on that for the next meeting, that would be great. Okay, on the warrants and minutes. We have, uh, full bi-weekly payroll warrant, number PR3, for the period ended July 29th, 2017, dated August 3rd, 2017, the amount of $572,175.83. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that we approve the invoice warrant, AP5, dated August 3rd, 2017, in the amount
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? CNN, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that we approve invoice warrant, AP6, dated August 10th, 2017, in the amount of $158,080.82.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? CNN, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so we have Mr. Steele here tonight, so we can finally approve some minutes that we've been putting off.
Oh, you've been waiting for me? Okay.
Because Mr. Flaherty wasn't here when we were...
Oh.
Doing all this, so.
The dates, right.
We have minutes of March 30th, 2017, and April 6th, 2017. Have we had a chance to read them over?
Yep.
We've had them for a while, so. I think we read them over a couple of times, so. Uh, any corrections, deletions? CNN, the Chair Intend, motion to approve the minutes of March 30th, 2017, and April 6th, 2017, as written.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One present. We have three in favor, one present. Next meeting agenda, August 24th. Summer's over already, my God.
We'll go over town meeting articles.
Okay.
That.
Yep, we'll have, uh, First Write of Refusal for, uh, Fairwind Farms on Bay Road. Can I get some updated from Solitude about the, whatever that stuff is over there? And I think that's all I have right now. Unless you guys, if you think of anything else that needs to go on, feel free to let Mike know, which you wanna put on. CNN, there's nothing else from you, pull the board. Intend a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.